This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's Tuesday, April 9. We're in the court house for our weekly meeting. It's available by U2 also, go to meeting also. We have an agenda in front of us. We are going to remove number 3A from the agenda at this time. You have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve on that, based on that removal.
Okay, the motions are second.
I'm second.
Oh, payers say aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Approve minutes on April 1st and 2nd meeting and claim. Do we have a chance to look at the minutes on both meetings?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the vehicle, first and second meeting of the claims.
Your motions are second.
I'm second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have on Monday, April 1st. Says I was not available. I was on, I had called in, and for some reason I couldn't. My, I couldn't get off of mute, so for my constituents out there, I was on the meeting, so that's all I have.
Okay, any other discussion?
So, are we rewording it, or just making a statement like that, or what?
I'm okay, let's just make a statement.
Roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
County Attorney General, discussion.
I don't have anything to talk about today. I have to be, I have to be in the courtroom at 9, so I'll probably take off maybe about a quarter till. Just so I get up there a little bit ahead of time. But anybody has anything? Okay?
Yes, we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, Puppi?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I heard from Sheriff Van Comworth County on Thursday last week. Their plan to hold in Cerberus County, they weren't able to finalize that over there, so that's off the table for them, and they'd like to come to Mitchell County now, if we could help them out. It said we certainly can. The sheriff was going to be gone for a week or so, and that he would get back to me and get with me then, when he returns from vacation, so he mentioned the 28D agreement, that's probably going to involve County Attorney's Office and someone from this board. If you want to be a part of how that plays out in us holding their inmates, or if we just want to bring to you the final package for your approval, whatever you want to do with that, you got a little time to think about it. But it sounds like they want to come this way now. They weren't able to get together with Cerberus County. So, we'll work on that moving forward. And whoever would like to be part of that, or nobody wants to be part of it, just let me know.
So, what, why would we be part of it? I mean, you know your department's under this one.
Well, certainly, any contracts are signed by you guys, not by me.
Yeah.
So, it was, it would be more to, I guess, stay informed from the get-go, rather than me bringing stuff back to you a week later at a board meeting. And simply if you just had any interest in wanting to be part of it. Is there a legal requirement? I don't think so. We can go ahead and handle it if you'd like us to, and then bring you the budget and package for your approval, or disapproval, or whatever. We would need to tweak it moving forward, so that we can help them out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking that, yeah, we have to sign, we have to do the signature thing, but in order for just one of us, or two of us, were on a committee that's doing what you're proposing, well, we can't talk to each other until the next meeting anyway, as far as something, and then you're at these meetings to talk about, so I mean, I don't really see a purpose in us doing that, but.
And that's why I think differently, too. Sure, just want to create the opportunity for you and Aaron and I can move forward with it, or whatever. If somebody wants to be part of it, just let us know.
Yeah, just my thoughts.
Yeah, no, that's good, that's good. So, I'll keep you posted as we move forward, what it's going to look like, and you know, when maybe our first meeting is set, and then you guys can make a decision based on that. So, that's really all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you find anything out about the tires?
Uh, yeah, we're actually kind of moving forward on that case, and so. There is a little hope. I don't want to say that we've got it solved, but we've got a pretty good lead. Just curious. So, anybody here has anything? I'll answer your question. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Department head, discussion.
I do. Yesterday, I received from the DNR, we have another master matrix, making sure to all the supervisors. On there, they did state they want it to be published in the newspaper by 4/22, how our newspapers work. Next week, like you guys would approve publishing this, and then it will get published on the 23rd or 24th. So, I did get approval from Cindy Garza, but that is fine. It's not that you have to have a public hearing. I'll just read her little short email. She said the public notice, the newspaper is to notify the public that there is an application, and that they can come review it at the courthouse during business hours. If they have any concerns or comments, they can submit them to the county, or have them present, or have the, or they can present them in person to the VOS at the public hearing. That is why we prefer to have them in favor ASAP, to allow for the public more time to review the comments. So, if you guys want to do a public hearing, you can set that next week to, and you can wait for the 8th of May. I'm confused. The first week in May, maybe, sorry. So, and it's for River Villa by Stock. It's Greg Fox, and the address is 3589 Addison Avenue. Not sure who will be in charge of going through. I think Todd did the last master address name.
Yeah. And Greg, my understanding is he's, he's getting rid of a few cattle lots, and then he's putting a cattle lot in. So, he really isn't adding to his, I talked to him on the phone the other day, he's not, he's not adding anymore. He's just, some of them are old, he's getting rid of, and then he's going to build it. A new cattle lot, so I really don't know how we do that with the DNR. We've never had that happen before.
I think you do it just like a new building, so you, they have their scoring in here, you verify if that's correct, and then you give your, as a sheet in here, we give our recommendation then to the DNR.
Is that over Riceville?
Yeah.
Well, north of Riceville.
Section 25 of Dallas Township.
So, it is Dodd, since it's in Sydney's.
Well, just, I didn't know if it was Dodd. Back up one, correct? That's all we want, but do it.
But then Jim did that one that been a compartment, or.
I did Case.
Redneck.
Yep.
That's over. But that's over in Sydney's. So, would Jim do it, or Dodd do it?
Well, I put that up to confirm that, which direction that goes. I know I did the Canadian one, yeah, you did.
That was right. I think we backed up, but maybe that's for meetings we back up, and maybe these will go ahead.
It's in, it's in that book, much way we go. Not that I don't want you to do it, but.
Yeah, by all means, by all means, you can do it if you want, I'm not going to.
Cattle are probably easier to tell us.
Yeah. Is that it, Rachel?
Yep.
So, I just wondered, we've got item 12 on here. I was going to ask as far as how the grant's going for the board help, but is that item 12 that's on the agenda, or is that a grant agreement that you're going to write? Is that item 12 on our agenda, or no?
Well, uh. Well done.
I just was wondering how the grant agreement's going, but if we're going to discuss it later, then I don't, we don't need to discuss it now.
Discuss it later.
Okay, all right, that's what I was wondering, I didn't know. Okay.
I just had one item that was debating to bring it up or not, that last week we had that urban renewal. Got brought up with libraries, and I had about three calls this week on it, and if I can shed a little light on it. We got Rachel had to send us out a thing for urban renewal to go to the city councils. And the bottom line says a representative from the county going to be intended to answer any questions. So, then I got to thinking, well, this was that, when it first started. And so, I got to think, well, who's going to be the representative to go to the city councils? I thought, well, they can have the chair go through, which doesn't have to be the chair, because I have no more authority or responsibility than any of the other five up here. And then I got to looking at the dates, and three of them are on the same night of the city councils. So, that one worked, so the same person couldn't be at all three meetings. So, then I thought, well, maybe I'll have the people in the districts. City of Mitchell would be my district, so maybe I'd go to the city council meeting in Mitchell. St. Ansgar would be mine. Stacy will be Mike's. Sidney would have Riceville, and Osage would have Todd and Jim. So, I thought, well, I'll go to the city council meeting, since I go to a few St. Ansgars and Mitchells. So, then I go to the city council, Mitchell, and Jim was there, gave the presentation, because the mayor asked me if they saw two of us there, and if we were going to give it, so Jim gave the presentation on urban renewal, because the park has to be in urban renewal for the, doing the bathrooms, or rest of the restrooms. So, then I went to the city in St. Ansgar, which is next week, and Jenny was there giving the presentation, and I heard that Todd went to Stacyville, and Jim and Sidney went to Riceville. Is that right?
Yeah, I went to Riceville, I went to Riceville, Sidney.
I did not go to Riceville.
So, I just wondered how they decided who was going to go to which city council meetings. But then at the last week's meeting, Jenny said that on the library board, that since Mike was not in favor of this project, that they didn't want him to go.
I don't, well, I don't think she said they didn't want him to go. I think she said that, we'd have to look that up, but it was more of a, since he's not in favor of it, it probably wouldn't make sense for him to go. I think that's how she ordered it, but.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Long story short, I just, I asked people if they could go to these meetings, because it was something that we had to do, so I just approached them one-on-one and asked them, and it was not, there was not discussion back and forth. It was just asked them, and yep, I can do that.
The dependence discussed at a board meeting with all five of us, I think we all five should have been in the loop, but we weren't. Jen's not a county employee either, so, you know.
Who isn't?
Jen.
County representative, since county representative.
Well, everybody thought we all should like, I don't want to kind of agree with my, we're kind of in the blind, we don't know. I just, what's going on? What the hell got brought up?
Yeah, I asked the individuals if they could go to those meetings.
Okay.
All I had, I guess.
Okay.
County engineer, Puppi? There's any others to find there?
Morning.
Morning.
What do you want to do first? The agreement, or you want to go through the budget? Let's do the agreement, that one's quicker, I guess. What you have is that, in front of you is the federal aid agreement for the raised discretionary project. That's for that bridge south of McIntyre that we were awarded. All this is saying is that we're on a meeting to do the project in accordance with the federal requirements for design and bridge construction, and they'll indicate how we pay it. On the document, it says the preliminary estimate of cost is 1.8 million, and of that 1.8 million estimated, the federal government will reimburse 80% of the cost, which is about 1.4 million, 1,440,000 dollars for the work of construction, so. Kind of a standard agreement we've been signing for years, just need to get it signed, so we can continue on with getting the project, you know, let. We won't let the project without the contract, and since we moved it up a year, just another formality to do.
It says 1.8 as far as construction costs, so engineering and stuff is going to be out of board.
Correct, engineering is not included in the grant costs.
So, it'll be more than 1.8.
Right. Yeah, most of these are just construction costs. We don't usually get grant money for design and construction engineering. Just, they'd rather put the money towards construction.
But what does that cost?
What's that?
What's that cost for engineering?
I'd have to go through the contract with them, but you guess I don't recall what it is. They're going to send us another contract. They got preliminary engineering done. We'll get a cost for final engineering here over the next week or so. So, it's, I, I don't want to say, because I don't remember what the numbers were. We approved their preliminary engineering a while ago, based on when we were getting the project rolling through the thing, so.
DOT grant?
So, I'd recommend the approval of the federal aid agreement for the raised discretionary project.
You have a motion for that?
Motion to approve HB-CO66 parent 88-EB66-2-24 raise-012 funding agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the. If I be a plan, is it?
Yeah, we'll go through the project, DOT budget program. On the, budget really hasn't changed a whole lot compared to what I, if I recall, it hasn't changed much compared to what I turned in for the county budget. It's just that sometimes it does change, and I didn't look that close at it before I came down here to see what actually did, and I don't think it did. But this is more for getting the DOT one put in, so I can get that approved. But it also includes, like, when we did that, when I did the county one, I also look at upcoming projects as well, and sometimes it's just things change between December and April, based on the snow and everything else. So, I've handed you guys a map of what's proposed in the five-year program. It's color-coded with the years of projected construction or letting of those projects. What I've also given you is an Excel spreadsheet that outlines, it's the colored ones that show FM and HBP dollars. It's about the cleanest way I can figure how to explain how I look at our funding for bridges and far-to-market projects for paving. The FM sheet tells us we have about a three-and-a-half-year borrow-ahead restriction. We can only accumulate up to three years' worth of funding. We haven't been able to accumulate three years' worth of funding for a very long time, but we can only borrow ahead three-and-a-half years. So, there's also restrictions that if you're borrowed so far ahead, they won't let you borrow the three-and-a-half years either. So, there's a balance in here, but what I've projected, and we get about, I think it's forecasted to be about $960,000 in far-to-market money for fiscal '25, but if you look through, the green bar on the FM is where I had back in December, where we had an approximate balance in our fund, and then the yellow are all projects that are estimated to be done with the money, and then it kind of indicates where we're borrow-ahead with the negative numbers on the far right, with estimated years and estimated balances, and based on projects we have. If you look at fiscal '26, we have Addison Avenue in a project. That's a shared project with Howard County. Since we're both planning on doing that project in that year, we have to have our funding solvent for that project. So, we've got a few projects in '24 and '25 in this list. You'll see that we've gotten Orchard Road and Lion Hill. They're already in the queue for far-to-market. And then as we go down, these are all far-to-market projects, not anything local, but just see when we get down to fiscal year '27, we're kind of in a bind as far as trying to make projects fundable, or any, anything going on. And then things change throughout, throughout the years, so projected now, it's kind of looking like fiscal year '27, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to fund some, some of these other projects that are going to need some, some of these roles that are going to need some work done. On the, but I guess the key right now is to look at maybe the next year or two out, to see that we're still solvent with some of that work that we can still do. And then on the other sheet, the HBP, we have a four-and-a-half-year borrow-ahead restriction. We only get about $340,000 a year to replace bridges. So, you'll see, I'm trying to keep that, that, that fund solvent also, and it looks like we're okay until we end up, until. I don't have the newest bridge inspection report back yet, so all of these are subject to change once I get that report done. But for now, we're planning on these projects for, for the upcoming years, and it's only one bridge a year, and they're not, they're not big bridges. They're, they're going to have to be, they're on smaller streams, they're going to have to be, well, except for the one bridge, when we see the H141 grant project in fiscal '25, since we moved that ahead. But that's also only $360,000 coming out of our bridge fund. The rest of it will be grant money, the 1.4 that we just approved the agreement for. But all these other ones are going to be small-stream bridges that we think we can afford to do unless something happens, and hydraulics indicate something different. So, we're kind of okay. We're still borrow-ahead on a lot of our, our bridge funding, but we're trying to keep that fluid enough to keep with the ever-changing restrictions and bridge repairs we need to do, so. That's in a nutshell of where our funding is at for the, for the far-to-market and the, and the bridge funding. And then the budget is just the budget, kind of similar to what we have on these other sheets that I handed out to you that are created through the service bureau, so made a few changes, I think. Proved the $2 million tip for projects next year, is that right?
The, there's probably carrying.
It's anticipated, I put it in there. I mean, if it doesn't happen, we don't do the projects, but I anticipated it in my budget to be put in. We're only looking at probably $600,000 in new equipment next year, that maybe buys us one truck and some miscellaneous stuff. We're still looking at, trying to find a new tractor, so we can start getting a different mower in the, in the system. We still need to start looking at trucks a little bit closer. New trucks are going to be, I don't know, they're probably creeping around $400,000, mowers are creeping around $500,000 for new, so.
That's fully equipped, well, fully equipped, yeah.
Back, going to the days when we buy 12 M3s in 2015 for like, under $300,000 fully equipped, but things have gotten expensive. So, what you're looking at, total expenditures of 8.6 million, that's, it's kind of, maybe hidden yet as to what our carryover balance is going to be from the end of this fiscal year, but we're going to see that our auditor's end balance is going to be 300,000 versus previous years of one point, you know, on the upper millions, but we'll see how this year ends. And if things get tight, there's things we don't spend money on, there's things we don't do for construction if our local dollars aren't going to work out for us, because we can't overspend, obviously. So, that in a nutshell is what the budget is, and the program is similar to what the map is showing. We're looking at some FM projects next year, the truck route around Osage here, the Grant Bridge, south of McIntyre, the River Road, which we've been talking about, River Road and those other local roads that are going to use local money for fiscal '25, and then we carry out to fiscal '26, where we're planning on doing Addison Avenue and some other bridge work along the way, some possible local work. In fiscal '27, I still have the Stacyville project in the queue. I don't know if we'll ever get grant money for it. You'll see in this program, it shows the whole 7.5 million, but in other estimates, I've reduced it just to our county road and not through town. The reason I did that is because when you get through town, when you get into town, like I've explained before, you get a whole mess of survey going on for sidewalks and utilities and everything else, so if we want to keep our projects moving and our road in good shape, and I know that road's not good either, we've got some stuff that we need to take care of, too, but project-wise, we're looking at big dollars here. We're just going to, we're going to do our road to the city limits if we can't find other funding to, to complete in town and do the other stuff that we were looking at doing.
About what does that take out of that 7.5?
About half of it. So, I've got to, I got to project the gym on this other sheet to be about 3.8 million for our part. Again, we kind of just look at the, it's nice to have this projected five-year plan out here, but every year it changes. There, I'm, there's projects you kick down the road. I had to take stuff out of the current, of the current program to kick it down into '29, which will probably keep getting kicked down, because the money's not there, so. We're trying to, we're trying to knock everything out as soon as we can on the critical things, and then hope money opens up later on, but we just kind of keep getting the cycle of trying to get the things done, and we have the money for it, and then as things progress, and if we find extra funding, we can advance, or we can advance some projects through a, depending on when it happens, we can advance it through an amendment or things like that, but for now, this is how I'm looking at where our funding is and where our projects are in need of getting done, so.
You said the bridge funding is around 340,000 a year.
A year.
And it's, and I realize the south of McIntyre is a grant, so that's kind of a different situation. At 1.8 million dollars for that bridge, and we're only allowed, we only get 340,000 dollars from the state a year. There's quite a, quite a difference there. Well, the grants will cover 1.4 million, I believe, correct?
Right, and that's the only way we could ever do that project, unless we found a different funding.
That's.
And that, that was, that was the reason, and the feds know it, the state knows it. That's why when we submitted projects, we submit the big projects, because they know that there are very few counties, if any, that can afford to do a $2 million bridge, and some counties have a lot of $2 million bridges that need to be done. So, you're, we're, it, I have a feeling sort of later something, you know, they've been talking about it for years, about how bad the Iowa's bridges are, and the funding is, is not available for all that stuff. So, when we get a grant, we're lucky to get it, but I mean, that's one bridge. There are a lot of long-span bridges over the Cedar River that are going to need improvements to take the current weight loads that are being allowed on the bridges, you know. We've been talking about south of Osage here for a while, and what we're going to do. If we have to start posting that bridge for, for loads, because that's a, that's a detour route for if anything happens on 218. You know, we, we've got to keep our stuff on these larger bridge crossings up to snuff on the major highways, and, you know, we've had it, we've had a study done on that bridge, whether it was worth it to fix certain things, and how long that fix was going to last versus replacing it, and if you look at dollars per year, the replacement was the better cost for doing it, but where are you going to come up with $3 million without a grant, or without some other funding? So, we're trying to pick, pick the, the things that we can afford to do off the list, and then when grants are available, we'll, we'll be allowed to submit them, but we have a grant committee, we have a grant committee that looks at our stuff, too, and all of our stuff we submit is based on points, if it's based on traffic, if it's based on detours, a lot of things that it's based on to even get qualified for. We were, we were very fortunate to get the one south of McIntyre, based on what we have in, in, in that bridge, and what it's going to take to keep traffic flowing. So, anyway, that's the budget program in a nutshell. Hope you have any questions, or we can go ahead and prove it, and I can get it submitted before Monday next week.
But like you said, the state has to realize that bridges all over the state.
Well, they do.
Yeah, and the federal government's going to have to step in on it someday.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're, we're a unique state, and unique in the fact, and I've brought it up several times. We had a one-mile grid pattern, and there are very. And unique in the fact, and I've brought it up several times, we had a one mile grid pattern and there are very few states that have that. And so every, every time a road crosses a major, a major river, you've got a major bridge. You know, if you've got, a lot of other places might not have the one mile grid, so you've got less bridges to, to maintain. But it's the way the, the lay of the land was laid out years ago, and that's what we're stuck with unless we, and I'm not even going to suggest starting to close roads to, like, a lot of roads just to eliminate the maintenance and stuff because we, we've been accustomed to what we have. But sooner or later, we got to figure out how we're going to maintain it all with, with House files, seven eighteen that was passed, you know? That all, that affects a lot of things. And it's, if we can't keep our, 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 our property tax asking the proper way, then we start losing far to market money. We start, you know, we start losing a lot of things. And I think sometimes the legislature doesn't always keep that in mind when they're passing laws. But you're right, I mean, they know it, but they're trying to figure out where the money's coming from.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the DOT program in budget. So move. The motions are second. Second. Any other discussion?
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi. I T.
I've done, if you get. No, get me out of here.
Send, send this to me in an, an PDF form also.
The, yeah.
I think you guys need another piece of paper.
Yep.
Uh, these are my notes, so for me to keep on track and not battle. So in the future, I'll send these out in email before the meetings and then you can review them and see if you have any questions for me ahead of time. For those who don't know, I'm Ryan Stephen. I am the IT director for Mitchell County. I've been in my role now about three months, maybe a little more than three months. Thought it was a good time to update the board on what I've been working on and what I'll be working on in the future. First thing I'd like to do is thank Mitchell County staff and the Mitchell County supervisors. Everybody has been very helpful and very friendly and accommodating in some situations that are definitely frustrating. So I really appreciate that. It's been a very welcoming and patient environment, which is definitely necessary when you look at some IT issues out there. One of the first things that I did when I came in is I really wanted to create a ticketing system where people could, if they had computer issues, submit something to me and then have a more organized communication method between myself and the users to go back and forth. The other thing that this is going to do is it's going to give us information on which departments may need more help from IT or maybe need more resources, depending on what kind of issues we're seeing. Since implementing that system, I've received seventy three tickets. There's still, some of them are longer term, so they sit there. There's a little bit management on my part of, you know, maybe delaying something or figuring that out. I don't think as of yet, there's any really useful information out of it, especially with staff getting used to entering the ticket system. They've done a very good job. I've been very impressed with how the users have responded to having to do that because it is a major change. I, of course, will still accept email and phone calls. It's just, this, this will really help organize where IT needs to put some of the different resources. Another thing I have done is I've created relationship with, relationships with multiple vendors when it comes to be able to quote out equipment. Generally, when it comes to very large purchases and very large, I'd say perhaps over a thousand dollars. I get two different quotes and that's something that I can share with you guys if you want, whenever I get those. But it's just a matter of doing due diligence when it comes to my budget. With, with all the different things that I want to buy. So with these vendors, a lot of them were recommended to me by Iowa County's Information Technology. I've been leaning them, on them a lot when it comes to what vendors to work with, what ones are good, what ones I, I may need to avoid. Also, I've done a lot of work, working with the state support method for all the different state-related systems that we have. There are quite a few systems out there that we don't have direct control of, that are overall controlled by the state. And I want to be able to have a system where it's easily able to address those, even if we don't have direct control with it. Most of these systems are in the sheriff's office. So that's something that I've reached out to all those support. And now I have names and numbers to be able to address those quickly if there happens to be something out of our control that we need to fix. The document that I gave you guys, the Iowa County Information Technology completed an audit. I don't remember when, it was before I was here, I think it was too far before. They had, I, I've been using this document, it's been very helpful to kind of guide what I've been working on as far as projects. I feel that I have the county at a place where a lot of the, call it fires, a lot of the user issues have at least leveled off. It's not a huge spike. So I've been focusing now on trying to address those critical issues. But I'll go through them quick. It's really a bird's eye view. I'm not going to boggy down with a bunch of technical jargon. But two of the, there were a total of fifteen recommendations. Two of them were addressed with my hiring. The next one is, there was a inmate phone server. It's a vendor called Railcord with an old computer that has been decommissioned and replaced with an updated device. In dispatch, there, and I'll talk a little bit more about dispatch. Two computers running unsupported operating systems, those also have been replaced, decommissioned and replaced. The Vine system from the state was also on an old computer that has been, also been decommissioned and replaced. One of these is a courthouse three sixty five open relay. That's, that has been solved. I won't get into exactly what that means because they'll probably nerd out a little too much. But that issue has been addressed. Multiple remote access programs on the computers, that generally happens over time as certain vendors need access to our systems to be able to do technical maintenance and it just kind of starts stacking on top of each other. Because they all use their own remote software, so it just starts to stack and stack and stack. I have gone through all of the server infrastructure to make sure that those are removed, since that's the most sensitive systems that we need to use. And then it's going to be a spot check on users' computers. I'm not as concerned about that. Because like, Solutions, for instance, has access to the computers to troubleshoot the software that we have. So it's just a matter of documenting and make sure everything there's on the up and up. And we don't have any methods of remote access that we don't know of. I don't think it's a concern as far as somebody coming in and doing something, you know, malicious. It's just a, it's just a matter of due diligence. And like the ICIT recommended, it's definitely a best practice to keep that under control. So as I said, the total critical recommendations were fifteen. I have addressed seven of those issues with nine remaining. I've done a lot of work over at the sheriff's office and dispatch, and I'd like to thank the sheriff's office. They've been very gracious, gracious with me doing some things that have definitely been a, a bit disruptive and a bit frustrating. But now I do feel that I have the capability of properly supporting the dispatch center. My main goal with IT is always, number one is safety and then county citizen safety. And that really is dispatch in a T. So one of my biggest focuses is to make sure that that system is up and running as much as possible and then create redundancies in case something breaks down, which will happen at some point. And I feel like I'm at the, I'm at the point where I'm comfortable being able to make sure that their systems are operating correctly and some of these critical recommendations address that as well. As far as, oh, double sided, okay. A couple of projects that have been completed since January when I was hired, worked with Chris. I've got a new E nine one one system installed at the sheriff's office as well as phones. Working with Dave, the new HVAC system is very connected when it comes to networking. It even kind of surprised me with all the cool things that he can do with remote access. So we got that set up. We got some new computers out for public health. Laura has been patient with me as well. So I, I appreciate that. There's a server room off of the, Sally Court and the sheriff's office. I was able to pull five machines that were unused out of that, out of that, that area. So it really freed up a lot of space to do some other things. I've talked about the vendors before. One of the vendors I've contacted, Shred's Hard Drives. That's one, and provides a certificate of destruction. That's something that I find to be very important. I'm not, not a hundred percent sure what we're on those hard drives. So I wanted to really get that so we know that, that information is destroyed as well as be able to approve that. That's also a requirement when it comes to some of the security organizations that we integrate with to be able to maintain compliance with that. And then also I've checked over the backup infrastructure and made sure that everything that needs to be backed up is backed up. That was one of the first things I did. Because if we're talking about keeping a continuity of business, that's the number one thing, is being able to restore everything quickly. As far as future projects that I'm looking at right now, we're going to update grading wifi access in the county campgrounds. That's one where I'm leaning on vendors heavily, but that's something that we're looking at now. We have a new panic button system calling, coming. It's a software called Links. I attended a, what they call a kickoff meeting for that with the vendor to go over exactly what it could do, all the different things there. And now, after that kickoff meeting, we're going to start implementation of that. Generally, when it comes to implementation, the first step is getting it down in the backend and then it comes to employee education. How do you do this? What does it do? And then also, training of the sheriff's department, who will be watching after the panic button systems, how it will look, what it means. There's a lot of cool features. There's a lot of features in the Link system that are a big improvement over what we have now. They have, just as an example, they have automatic testing of all the panic buttons. That's huge. So I think the system will definitely bring resilience again to something that's safety related, which clues back to my biggest concern, which is definitely safety of staff as well as citizens of the county. And then it's just continued work on the ICIT audit when it comes to the critical issues. I will continue to check those off the list. Some of those are long-term and require replacement of more expensive equipment. I haven't replaced anything very expensive at all, but that's coming down the pipeline. I will provide, once I get everything put together, a three to five-year plan of what I expect the budget to be. I do want to get some sort of cycle, so it's not, I don't want to come to you and say, hey, guys, I need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I want to be able to say, okay, over this year I will need this, kind of level off so we can get that cycle going instead of spiking. Because any of that spiking can be a little scary, a little sticker shock when you see that. So that's something else I will provide for you guys. Yeah, so that's what I am currently working on. Do you guys have any questions?
Where is your budget? You talked about, when ICFD was here, some counties do it where the, the IT department funds all the computers that need to be replaced, the whole thing, which ends up their budget being, the budget gets to be quite a bit. Other ones do it where the individual departments, the owner's office, for instance, it's in their budget for figure out if a computer replaces and stuff. So I'm not advocating one way or the other, but that's just something we're going to figure out in the future, just how we're going to do.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. Yeah, I guess it's, I, I don't have anything other to say than it's, it's definitely something that we should consider when it comes to computer purchases, especially so it's, you know, all together and I'm kind of, you know, a part of the different departments. But I have purchased new computers just as needed now that just needed to be replaced, kind of no question. So I just have bought some, but in the future we can get more organized.
That was just a topic?
Yeah, no, definitely. Yeah.
It would be easier to have it all in one.
Oh, it'd definitely be easier for me. Yeah, and have some more control and knowledge about what's being purchased and where it's being purchased. I don't want to take anything away from the departments as far as when or where they get the computers, just more as a consultation of what that they should do from an IT standpoint.
Works harder, not harder.
That's, well, that's, that's what we try anyway, right?
In ISAC, when they were here, they suggested they're going to use the three sixty emails.
Yes, the only one that I found that wasn't using the three sixty email was at the sheriff's office. And this was because of some of the information, public information that was sent out, already had that attached to it. And before we can make that change over, all of that needs to be used up or, or changed to the new email address. I'm not overly concerned with what's happening now, especially since we know what's happening. And it's only limited to one address. I've checked every other, every other person. So yeah, that was part of it. And I didn't put that on the list because it's technically not done, but it's being addressed.
Still think I get some that aren't from the three sixty from county employees.
Oh, do you? Well, maybe we can talk about which ones those are.
I think we still have some that need to be changed.
Do you? Okay, well, I'll talk with everybody about that as well to make sure that we have it covered. Again, that's just what I found. I'm sure I'll continue to honor stuff. That's good to know. I appreciate that. Yep. Nope, that's great. And you guys can submit tickets too if you want. Don't worry about it. Of course, I just added in mostly in jest, but. Anything else? All right, thank you guys, appreciate it. Please let me know if you need anything or if you got more information like that, it's very helpful.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Discussion on possible action on HVAC request application to twenty three. So this is HVAC application twenty three, general amounts of work that were done with this one, materials, labor, general work. AJ Construction, that has to do with a lot of the, I'll say the sheet rock or the woodworking stuff taking place. Balancer, I'm not quite sure what that is, but that was not, there's nothing been done on that. And then insulation, a lot of insulating going on still, but it's starting to be wrapped up. So this is in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and four cents. We have a motion to accept pay, pay request application twenty three.
I'll make a motion to accept pay application number twenty three.
Motion is our second. Second. Any other discussion?
Do, do they have an estimated completion date?
We are, I can get into that just after this, okay? I plan on doing a little talk about that.
Okay.
Roll call, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Cindy.
Yeah, she's still there.
Hey, sorry.
Discussion on possible action. Mark, did I just talk about the project just a little bit? So a few meetings ago, I told the contractor and our engineering consultant that I wanted this project to be finalized and paid out in this fiscal year. So it's been a big push to, to make that happen. And the contractors are all for making that happen also, so they're working quite a bit in order to do that. Contractor, the main prime contractor developed a list as far as what his subs have to do yet. They've been pecking away on all that. Again, insulation was a big, a big item. So far, we are at ninety-two point two-nine percent of completion as far as the dollars that are in on the project. It's planned to have, the punch list is planned to be, punch list is items as far as when is that, when it is at substantial completion. It's just the odds and ends that remain to be done. There's a review done by our engineering consultants and they see things that might need to be done and that's called a punch list. That is planned to be sometime like fifteenth, sixteenth or seventeenth, just planned. And then system demonstration and training to the owner is planned to be the sixth of May. So at the time, we had a meeting last week, there was a week and a half of insulating left to be done. We talked about lights that were going, I think I mentioned this at another meeting too, lights that were planned to be in the construction. They felt that there is totally enough lighting down in the mechanical room the way it is. So what it's going to be is those lights would be just given to Mitchell County and then they will. and then they will utilize them in areas that, that is appropriate. So there'll be ICT that, uh, comes for that, instruction to contractor, and then a change order request also comes for that. There's going to be no costs involved with that at all. Any questions? They're working on it.
Okay, now, discussion possible action on supervisor HR. They're on a six-month rotating, being on HR in our six months and stuff, I guess. Correct? So, do I have to, oh, Mr. Oregon, I have a question for you.
Yes, do you see any possible problems with, uh, officials being the human resources director? Personally, I do. Because I'm not, uh, I don't know the laws.
I agree with you. At some point in time, you're going to be a contractor.
Yes.
And I don't know if you remember, since we started this, I have not, I do not want to partake in it because of that reason. So I just, I'm not comfortable.
It's interesting you bring that up. Um, I don't know, a lot of counties, um, I mean, as county attorney, people come to me with legal questions, and that's perfectly great. But there's obviously some, probably some roles that a human resources person does that I wouldn't do. And I don't know exactly what those are, because I'm not a human resources person, you know what I mean? The two are kind of different. I mean, um, because in each organization it's different, but like, you know, some human resources offices will have, um, you know, and they do the coordination of, uh, of, of paperwork, whether it be, you know, I don't know, disability stuff, and medical leave, whatever, you know, beyond any number of that. Um, that wouldn't be something I would do. So the point is, a lot of counties, I don't know about a lot, some, I don't know, um, hire, uh, human resources people. Um, not on a full-time basis, but on a, you know, consulting base, on a, you know, as-needed basis, I guess you could say. Um, so there are a couple, well, probably more than a couple, but I'm thinking of a couple in the head, of law firms, um, in Des Moines that do have, I don't know if I want to say a human resources department, I don't know if that's the right word, they have attorneys that kind of deal only with that, you know, kind of like, uh, the guy's name's escaping me now, you know, but the finance guy at, uh, what is it, Dorsey, what, neither one of them, I can't remember his name, you know, like, he specializes in, you know, the very certain things, um, it might be the same firm, might be a different one, but they have, um, specialists available, like on an as-needed basis, or those kinds of things. Um, I don't know what they charge, and I mean, I've, I've dealt with them more in my private practice than I have in the county, but I'm familiar with them, and I could probably, if you guys wanted, I could probably get ahold of them and say, how does this work? I mean, um, and again, I don't have any problem, um, given legal opinion and things like that. But it's also true that the law is so specialized these days that there's times, and it's probably just going to compound as time goes on, where it's going to be like, we need a more specialized opinion. So, anyway, that's something to think about.
Isn't there, isn't there a reason why we have department heads though, is to, you know, and I go to you if you have questions? I mean, why we have department heads in that room? No.
I guess it depends on whether the department head wants to be, uh, specialized in a human resource.
And I think there's a lot of employment laws that really, like, if you don't know the laws, and you kind of make the inadvertently big decisions. I mean, it does put you at risk if you don't know what the law is. There's lots of things that, you know, that fall under employment law.
I mean, people can either listen or don't listen, but if I were, if I were to say the auditor, I'm probably going to say, I'm just using that as an example to be any, like, at the office, I'm probably going to say, well, I'm not going to take on the responsibility advising on all this stuff, you know, and, you know. Maybe he's probably correct on, but I would do it as much as I could. There's going to be some things where I'm going to say, I'm not going to.
So I do have a comment about that. So supervisor HR was not intended to be HR provincial county supervisor. HR had was to be for the intent of the employees that are hired under the supervisors solely. And we were going to go a situation that we're all aware of back when, and it was, it was felt appropriate rather than five supervisors always having to have a meeting, because that's required by law, maybe with department heads as far as the issues and problems that were being experienced. It was felt that we would create a supervisor HR where two supervisors are trying to deal with this problem to try to make it more, uh, smooth-running rather than five of us always having to meet for a meeting. That ended up developing into, uh, uh, I'm not whining here, but this is a fact as far as, uh, being, uh, at least myself, being criticized for some of the actions that were being taken place as far as for us to actually try to maneuver through that situation. There was nothing illegal going on, but ended up becoming scrutinized for what was happening. I'm not going to do the supervisor HR anymore. If it disbands, it disbands. I don't care. I care about our employees, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to take the legal problems associated with that role. That's why it was created, and that's what ended up happening after so long of that process. That's a comment.
I was going to bring this up, if I got to discussion, we're there. So I'm on HR for social services, and we meet, there's four supervisors that meet. I don't want to put Megan on the spot, but, uh, we do minor things, it's a annual, wages, hiring. But if there is a discrepancy or a big problem, it's an attorney for HR that Megan goes to, so.
We come back with an attorney, yeah, in Des Moines, ours in Columbia.
Yeah. So I thought it, it started, uh, HR department, then it started for somebody to, for the employees to come talk to on minor issues rather than, it used to go to Rachel, and Rachel used to get all the complaints. So then we, we got it started, so they would totally come to us and not right there.
That's true.
Which the minor things is fine, we can, somebody's driving, getting somebody else who can probably handle that. But as far as getting deeper into that, I don't think.
There's always a little bit of that going on, simply. So, yeah.
So I am HR director for county social services, and I know I'm not a county employee, but obviously we still, we do GA and serve residents of Mitchell County, and I am a resident of Mitchell County. So I would say, from an HR perspective, there's a lot more than just taking a complaint, and then I would, I would first ask, like, so is there documentation of complaints? Is there, there, there is a lot, a lot that goes into human resources, that's laws, you know, documenting, like, all kinds of things. Um, so, I mean, that's, you know, my primary role with county social services, and we have much fewer employees than what you do. So I see a lot of value in, in having an HR, uh, professional within, and I know counties like, like, Aaron had said, are, are going to that be, because they're, you know, you just don't want to end up being in a, you know, a bad situation, or, you know, something, um, bad happening, and there isn't documentation, or there isn't something that, that needs to be in place, even just, you know, personnel records, all of those kind of things. It's, there, there's a lot to it. Um, so that's just my comment.
Thank you. So as far as being in the near done list too, I'm all for that, but I don't want to, um, make any legal, but I have no idea what the laws are.
I, I totally agree. If people come to me and want to talk to me about something, you bet, I'm totally open to that, yeah.
So we have no, uh, motion? Very none. We'll move on to opioid funds discussion of possible action.
Good morning. So I am here on behalf of the Substance Use Coalition. Um, we met last Tuesday, and we discussed some different opportunities that we have, um, and would like to request opioid funds from you guys, um, to be able to, um, do this. A few other things, um, we are looking at doing ads on opioids and papers and radio stations. Um, maybe if you can shed light on the cost, I don't think we've got finalized costs for this.
Yeah, we've only, we've only heard back from one, yes, entity for sure, but, yeah, I mean, it's, I think that one was like two hundred dollars for a, a month for an ad, and this is, they were, the coalition wanted to look into like our, um, like our, uh, local sports networks that, you know, live stream, so you're, you're, you know, Kiss ninety-eight point seven, uh, Saints TV, and then we reached, I reached out to Riceville, um, they have a network that they use now, but it's being used, I mean, it's widely, it's a big network, but they're looking at getting their own too, so, um, but yeah, so I haven't gotten the quotes from Riceville or Sineasger yet, for sure, um, definitely quotes, but, uh, yeah, thank you.
Um, so we would like to request to put, just like we do the movie theaters, um, ad now, we'd like to have more access to doing more ads out there, that awareness, um, to the community, on the citizens. Um, second thing that we are looking at doing is providing Narcan slash tips training to those that serve and sell alcohol here in Mitchell County. So this was done several years ago, um, and the main thing why it stopped is because there was not any compliance checks being done. They stopped doing the compliance checks. However, the state is talking now that they are going to hire someone to come in and do these compliance checks. So getting an underage individual going to the grocery store, going to a restaurant, um, and trying to buy alcohol, and, and just that, going through that training. So tips training is training for intervention procedures. Um, what it is, is it's a skill-based training program designed to prevent alcohol abuse, drunk driving, and underage drinking by enhancing the fundamental people skills of servers, sellers, and consumers of alcohol. Um, it gives individuals knowledge and confidence they need to recognize a potential alcohol-related problem and effectively intervene to prevent alcohol-related tragedies. So, um, we would partner with Prairie Ridge, they do have a trainer on hand, um, that can provide the tips training. Um, currently, right now, she's going out in the community and seeing what the interest is here in Mitchell County. Um, and with that statewide alcohol checks possibly being implemented, um, it's important that we do provide that. I know in the past, highway patrol, um, did that for Mitchell County. Um, I believe someone's talk, going to talk to Sheriff Drew around that as well too, um, to see if they would do the compliance checks as well. Um, so just those conversations, I think it's important for people to be aware and knowledgeable of those skills, um, for that tips training. Um, how that works is we would offer two different classes and timeframes for individuals. And the training would be, normally the tips training alone is three to four hours, um, but we will do additional training with Narcan in there as well, just because we have grants to be able to get Narcan in businesses and bars and, and restaurants and those types of things as well too. So it'd be about a four to five-hour training, um, at seventy-six dollars per hour, so it's not per person. So she could have a class of twenty people, and then just be the seventy-six dollars an hour. Um, so looking right around seven hundred and sixty dollars for that training, um, and the use of the opioid funds, um, for that.
And the ads don't look like a dollar amount yet?
You don't, no, but, I mean, once we, I want to get approval, so once we got the okay, we could start throwing out there with, sports season's still coming, we can get stuff in the paper too, um, we probably utilize enterprise, um, as they are the main, um, paper here in Mitchell County, um, and provide that.
Do you have an idea of an amount that we could think about as far as if we're approving for you, I mean, a guess?
I don't. I would say, like, for the tips training, around seven hundred and sixty dollars. As far as ads, that's going to probably be different for everything.
So if we did, like, uh, I'm just going to pick it up, we picked, pardon you, three thousand dollars for this, and then you could just utilize that for funding as you.
And so we could have them send the bills to you guys, and Rachel, would you be attached there with us in case we get involved or request?
Yeah, and right now, there's twenty-eight thousand in the budget up this year.
So.
It's just a guess number, I mean, whatever.
And if Rachel stays in touch with, um, our treasurer, whoever, and just say, hey, you're getting out twenty-six hundred dollars, what's the future look like for more ads, and then we can come back and request more as well too. Um, but these do fall all under the, um, that grant, um, as far as what needs to be used for that opioid funding.
That's true. They're going to be long, we'll probably get more money in that from the whole.
Yeah, awesome.
I was saying, it was a yearly thing.
When you talk about those ads, most of our schools have, um, those nice scoreboards that run ads. Could we run them during the advance?
That's what we talked about. So, um, we reached out to the, um, like the Saints TV, the ninety-eight seven that does, um, the Osage Sports. I know Osage is looking at getting their own sports network too, or sports television too. Um, so they were all on board and letting us advertise through there, um, just waiting for quotes to come back on that. So, but I think three thousand dollars would be a substantial amount, and if we need to request more, um, we can as well too. But I just want to be, you know, if we come back and say, yep, we can do a tips class, I want to be able to move forward with it instead of waiting and coming to you guys then, I just want to be proactive on it, um, and go from there, so.
Just want some sort of an idea for a dollar amount, uh?
Yes, and there's, you know, more opportunities too, um, you know, in the future, we're done with the school year this year, next year we'll do Prime for Life. Um, and I know you guys gave funding amount as well for that, so in the future, you know, we'll ask for that once the school year starts to, um, come back for some opioid money for that as well too, but that's something on the, um, that's not at this time. But those are the two things that we're looking at for the ads and then the tips training funding.
I'd, I'd make a motion to approve three thousand dollars for, just, I don't know, opioid funding to. These items, tips training and the ads?
The motion is our second. Second. Any other discussion? On that Narcan, there's a shelf life on that, isn't there?
There is, yep, yep, but, um, the state, we have grants too. I just got schools, um, and did training for the schools on Narcan. So they can, once it expires, we can submit another grant and get it, um, back to them. So we have it for police officers, Osage PD, sheriff's office, safety, earth science PD have all taken advantage of it. Um, and then now they have that available for businesses too, so it's up to them just to keep an idea of that shelf life, um, and throwing away, discarding it, and then reaching back out to get some more and stack, yes.
Because then they say the, the ones that are outdated, they use on service products, we're that.
We do, yeah.
Not nice for a dog, is that?
Not very good for a dog, it doesn't get that, but it must be okay for them that, that one that's expired and that.
So it's, I mean, it's beneficial for anyone for the Narcan, it's not going to, if, if it's not necessarily clearly an overdose that you're dealing with, Narcan's not going to affect you. Um, so if you just think someone's having an overdose, Narcan can be used to reverse that. Um, but let's say it didn't end up being an overdose, there's no, um, it's not going to do any harm to you for that. So there is no harm for the animals either as well.
True.
Roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Sydney?
Bye.
Bye.
Hi.
Sydney?
Hi.
So, the occupancy room. So I have, as you guys know, mental health is a huge concern here in Mitchell County, everywhere, I believe. And so I have been working with Prairie Ridge to try and get a therapist into Mitchell County to have more, more availability. Zoom is available. You're now finding it very hard in few places to even do Zoom. So being able to see that person one-on-one is, is a huge asset. Therapists that we are going to have come in and fell through, because they are short staffed now at Prairie Ridge for that, but they were able to offer me a prescriber, a mental health prescriber. And so what that mental health prescriber is, is someone that can adjust medications of anyone that is on any mental health drugs. So her name is Kristen Penn. She's a nurse practitioner, is finishing up school, and she can treatment, do treatment for youth and adults. Right now, we have a lot of individuals that travel from Mitchell County and try and find a ride to Prairie Ridge to get shots, injections, to get their meds changed. And it would be beneficial if we could have someone here. I know in the past, we've always had, we had a Prairie Ridge individual over at the, the County Social Services Building. And they are a nonprofit organization, and I was wondering if we could utilize one of the empty rooms over there for Prairie Ridge to come in and provide services. Right now, she's looking at a half of a day, unfortunately, only half of a day, but hopefully we can increase that more. And she's looking at Tuesdays or Thursdays in the afternoon. And she will start this no later than July 1st. She did come into the building probably six weeks ago and, and looked it over and just, and we have lots of, you know, discussions and stuff like that. I thought I'd come here first and make sure that that room was available before we moved on with any more discussion on what that looks like and, and how that's gonna work. So I was hoping to get you guys' approval for us to get a mental health prescriber here one afternoon a week and provide those services for Mitchell County residents.
The last, I'm all for this. This needs to happen. So I'm all for this. The last one that we had here, I, the way I understand that, there's a thermostat that's in that room that actually controls part of the, other part of the building. Is that correct? And Dave Hartos really needs to have access to the facilities that he picks here. And the last group or individual that was there did not want any access into that room for Dave to go in there. That's all the concern I have is that, and I get it that there's hippos stuff that these people are dealing with, but it's also their responsibility to lock that stuff up rather than have papers laying around because they're afraid somebody's gonna see the papers on the table. They need to lock their stuff up. So I'm all for this to happen, but I also don't want them to think that now that they have these services, that it's their room and they own the room, that they have total control of the room. That's, that's my only concern.
And I can definitely have that conversation with them and just make sure that they're aware that thermostat is in there. And our maintenance individual will have, need to have access to that room just to control that building. So I don't see where that'd be a problem, but I will definitely run that by them. And if it is a concern, we can have those conversations.
Yeah, if it's a concern, well, then he has to be, if there needs to be another person with him when he's in, and it's not like he's gonna be in there a lot, but if there is something that happens, he needs to be able to go do his job. So.
Is that the only room we can have, or?
There's only one room over there. I guess we could switch rooms around. Right now, we have stuff for storage, for social services, and then us. We have like one room that has a lot of filing cabinets in it, and then stuff that we use to go out and about and do education resources too. And then there's another room that gets used, how often? That needs adjustment?
Oh, DHS. DHS is, yeah, it doesn't get used very much, but it is allocated for to them.
Yes. So a room is used for DHS, and then Crisis Intervention has a room, and then SHIP has a room over there. So there is really only, only one room available. If we need to, we could probably switch our storage room, if we needed to, if it's a problem.
Take care of that for all of them, if somebody swats, switches offices?
I don't, I don't see it to be a problem if the people that are utilizing the room realize that there might be times that Dave needs to go in there.
And if it is a problem, that's something we can look at, is just swapping those two rooms to the storage area and making that other room available.
We want this to work. What's best for what needs to be done, for what you people are doing there, that, that all needs to be taken into consideration. If they're simple, if they're simply willing to just accept that, yeah, he might need to go in there, we'll just have that conversation, see where that's at first.
And then, yeah, and then with this, we're hoping we can pull a therapist in with her and kind of go side by side. She did say they'd be able to share the same office just as long as it was in same days that they were there. But I think it'll just fill with that jumpstart of someone coming into our community and being face-to-face as well. So, yeah.
Very good. All they need is locking file cabinet, put their documents in, grab there.
Exactly. And you know, that's something that she would take along with her, just to have with her back at the office if she needed to look at something or do documentation, whatever, too. So.
You said there's a thermostat in there?
I don't know.
You leave the door open then, so it gets, okay. So that's another reason, you know, thermostat's in there, it's controlling more area, you gotta leave the door open. It's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna keep the temperature consistent.
So maybe that's, that's, we'll talk about it.
Just, just see what, you know, just have the conversation and see where you're at. Make it work for what's best for you.
Okay.
Is there a motion for? Room for the county social service?
So moved.
Motion is our second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Brocall, Mark?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Sydney?
Hi.
Bye.
Approve auditors, quarter leader, your.
The, well, twelve, funding opportunities for fiscal year twenty-five county substance abuse.
Funding opportunity for fiscal year twenty-five county substance abuse program.
So this was a funding that was available, there is available. It's a 25% match, and you take it out of the opioid fund to match it. And with some discussion with Jessa, the amount of money in, or what, you know, you have to document what you're gonna spend it on. We didn't know if it would be practical to even do it because we've got so much and we're gonna be getting more. And so, Jessa, between the two of us, we didn't know if we should do it or not, just because of what we have.
I'm gonna say something. It's a 75% match, so.
Yeah, we have to match 75%.
Yeah, we have to match 75%, so it's a lot more than that.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, that was your decision to talk to the board, I guess, on whether or not you wanted to apply for that, after the last meeting we talked about, you applying for that, and you discussed it.
Yeah.
So that's.
Substance abuse. If we needed it, you know. So.
Is there more, does this money do things other than just substance use problems?
Yes. So this grant would be for evidence-based programs. So we went through, incorporate a lot of other things, like opioid stuff into a treatment we provide to habit under the opioid stuff. Substance, substance use is now, with the alignment at the state, it's now under behavioral health. And so I know Megan and Ashley probably have a lot of opportunities as well that we could use under this grant. And I have a couple of evidence-based programs that would involve, and a opioid that we do provide to our county that we couldn't as well too.
So it would pay for other things, other than just the substance? It, it would pay for other things other than just what the opioid money pays for? Correct. Okay. But we're not gonna do it?
Well, I don't know. We have the discussion. We didn't know what we're gonna use it for. I, I didn't know with other stuff. I don't, you know what the dollar amount is, I don't?
Up to $10,000.
$10,000.
So let's say we request the $10,000, you guys would have to pay 30, and then we get the 10, 100 grand and that stuff. That's how that match works. So it just depends, I don't know how much they necessarily use for substance use for county dollars or anything like that. I don't have those numbers, but something to take into consideration as well too.
Like what to do, two days, the 11?
Yeah, so they had their last call in their last Thursday. I was on the call before that, so didn't get on this one, I didn't know.
I was at a dance appointment, I come, I don't know, did you listen to Todd?
So we missed both of the meetings. Okay.
Yeah. So, and it just talks about this, I did send the information out several weeks ago to you guys, it talks about just the whole grant and, and all, and what the opportunities are for, and what that, there's tools there that show what those opportunities are for, what we could use it for.
No, I doubt we're gonna get a grant for two days without education. I mean, we're not, none of us are grant writers, and so. About 11,000, of course, it's gonna be doing. Okay.
You got, you got ready? Would I go with them? Apparently, you have two days, nothing to get it?
Yeah, I, I know I can write a grant, two days, you got one, I'll write a grant, so.
I think in the future, this would be a great opportunity. I know a lot of you guys are concerned about using county dollars, so this right here is an opportunity. So I know there's, you guys taking that, that chance to go on, just to learn how to write the grants. I know the room can get these funds and not, feel do more resources, more experience, trying substance use, and that just is all county dollars as well too. So I say, you know, if it's not gonna be done this year, definitely, hopefully next year we can sit together, sit down earlier and look at this and, and have you guys apply for that.
Very good. For maybe in the future, they're gonna loosen the strings for the opioid money to use for something like this?
I, I think they, so you can use opioid money as a match, but there's certain situations that you have to use that opioid money for. So it can't just be for anything. And the stuff, this has to be evidence-based practices that you use this on. So some of the stuff doesn't relate to anything opioid, so we wouldn't be able to use that match. So just depending on what we're providing and what services we're providing, if we're at that match to use opioid funds. You know, we're looking at budgets of what they do use, what we would use, and putting that together, we could also implement a lot more programs probably in our community that's, you know, in the schools and stuff like that too, that can be utilized for this with these funds too. So, and I, to be honest, I can see part of the opioid chain is, I know there's a lot about their stuff on the table that they're talking about opioid funds, what's that gonna look like in the future? Is the state gonna take some of that away? How is that gonna be utilized too? So I wouldn't guarantee that most opioid funds are always gonna be.
They never take it, they wouldn't do something.
It's the state we're talking about. So, so you never know. So I, I wouldn't say that we have X amount of money coming in every year because I can see that not being there at some time as well too. And I know there's been talk about it this year, there's stuff on the table and in the house and everything, for that discussion. So, for most of the future.
So just so you know, like the Substance Abuse Department that we manage, it's more like your legal services, committals, treatment for substance abuse.
Sheriff transports.
Sheriff transports, yep. And so this, this grant would be more like some, again, like she, like Jessa said, like education, recovery services, post-treatment services. So a little bit, a little bit different, you know, menu than what, what it is that the county substance use department funds. So, so yeah, I agree. I think it'd be a great addition to have, you know, funds for, and more service opportunities for folks with substance abuse, so.
Hey, great. Prove auditors report, or auditors calling report? Looks like we have $3,111. Motion to approve the $3,111 on the auditor's report?
I'm moving to make that motion.
The motion is our second.
I'll second.
Any others?
Brocall, Jim?
Hi.
Sydney?
Hi.
Prove chargers monthly before the market.
You have on the copy of it? I got your copies if you don't. All right. So this is the new report we're doing. Order vehicles paid to state. I don't know if you want me to go through it. $207,456.60. General, basic is the next three lines of the money we get reimbursed from the state. Driver's license, we issued 161 last, driver's license and photo IDs last month. Of those, six of them did not live or pay property taxes in Mitchell County, so they had to pay the $60, $10 each for the convenience fee. Organ donor to the state was 112.50. No registration to state was 201,707.30. Of that, Mitchell County got $237.15 for processing it. So a total out of the 207,456.60, we got $11,818.55. Once again, that is all in legislation right now to get those amounts increased. So if you talk to your legislatures, legislators, senators, we have put it in for four years straight to increase those. Some of them haven't increased since the 90s. So they're really, really old numbers. We get minimal. Actually, the best, the $7 per county driver's license and photo ID is the best percentage of return that we get on anything we do in our office. Everything else is pennies on the dollar. So for, and then the next half of our department would be property taxes collected. We collected $9,556.670.46. Penalties, we collected 1,802. That would be, some people don't pay their first half in September, they wait till March to pay first and second half. I'm presuming they have their property tax or their income tax return or something. So that would have most likely been penalties on the September that they did not pay. Special assessments was $383. We did have one tax certificate that was redeemed for $418.48. Prepaid taxes, in some instances, farmers or other individuals will sell land, and they got their bill in September. And then in March, they get their stubs out and they forgot they sold farm or the acres. So then they sent us a payment for all of that. And in most cases, they don't want us, we don't refund it, we can get a new check, but we will not refund because they would obviously have a check that shows that they paid property taxes, X amount of dollars for their taxes for farm or for their entity. So our policy is if they don't want to do a new check, then we put it towards futures, which means in September, it'll just show as a prepaid tax line and it comes off. But I do not take a check and send them back a check from us without that asked. But I feel that they would have a receipt or a canceled check for property taxes, and that's not right. Other instances would be if someone sold a property and they got a, the realtor or the attorney paid it and they paid extra, we port that towards taxes in the future. And some people make monthly payments. They just pay so much every month to have their budget done, and then they're at the point where now they're gonna start paying towards September. So that's the prepaid taxes. It's, it's a nice service. It's a little crazy when it's time to do tax statements, but we deal with it. Interest on investments was $42,388.33. And Miss Lanes, Miss Lanes' receipts from other county departments, we processed 73 for $1,315,930.77. So the total revenues processed was $11,354,896.54. Item of note, just so you know, treasurer's orders that are going out on the 12th was 5.9 million. So I know you got our balance statement of what we have in the county coffers right now, it's about 6 million, does go out at the end of the week. So our balance is well.
Okay.
Any question? We have about 96% of the taxes collected. We're just under 600,000 to collect. So, and we will send notices out towards the end of the month to let them know that it's late. And then usually that gets a good response.
That average over the years?
Yeah, yeah, we have the same ones, and those people just forget. So I like to buy code. We shall send them a notice by May 1st. I like to do it in April. That notice does show two months of interest. And then if they come in before May 1st, then they only have to pay one month of interest. But I don't think it's fair to wait for them to accrue two months of penalties or interest when we can tell them ahead of time. But I don't think it's fair to wait for them to accrue two months of penalties or, or interest, um, when we can tell them ahead of time. They're kinda happy if they come in and their, their net bills are a little bit lower than what was on the paper, so. I gotta say, it was the best property taxes with it raining, because everybody was in a pretty good mood that we were getting rain, so they weren't so upset about property taxes. So it was, the last week was a little bit less stressful than one.
Saying that, I will move to make a motion to approve the treasurer's monthly report. The motion is our second. Our second. Any other discussion?
Roque Hall, Todd.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Discussion of possible action on depository resolution?
All right, so the last time we, um, I re-upped it was in twenty twenty, that was resolution ten fifty-seven. As I notified everyone, uh, first, I believe, we went over our twelve million dollar depository limit for home trust. So then I, um, then started moving everything to First Citizens, then I exceeded my twelve million limit at First Citizens. So I am increasing the max balances. These are all per the code, um, twelve B states that we should have all our deposits in county or contiguous county. It has to be either in Mitchell County or in a touching county, which all of ours are in Mitchell County that we have listed. Um, I paid, I did talk to them because I was doing this, which is the Des Moines, where we can deposit county monies. They are not, uh, depository, so he said they do not have to be listed on this. I did talk to Paul, um, we have an agreement from nineteen eighty-nine, I believe. So we have a signed agreement with them, I have a copy of that, so we'll talk about that at a later date. He's, he's willing to come and talk to us about the fact that we can do short-term deposits, but he said it isn't a depository, it's more like a CD investment. So we do not have to list them on our depository list.
Yeah.
So thought that was interesting to learn, so. This is just, uh, doing business, I, the auditor, I've increased a couple of different ones, like the auditors, I increased from thirty-five to fifty-one for First Citizens. Um, I also increased a hundred and fifty at Home Trust, I wasn't sure if you needed that, but I was increasing, so I figured I might as well give you some more wiggle room. Uh, recorders increased at First Citizens from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand, sheriff from ten thousand to twenty thousand. Home Trust, um, sheriff, a hundred thousand seemed adequate, farmers, fifty thousand adequate. Um, CUSB, we do have some accounts for the sheriff's office, so I increased that to fifty thousand from twenty. Treasurers at First Citizens, I went from twelve million to fourteen million. Home Trust, I went from twelve million to fourteen million. Farmer State Bank, I went from one million to two million, we did, we have had some good CD rates from them, so I do use them more than usual. CUSB, um, six million, I don't have a lot of accounts there, so I did not feel the need to increase that. And San Anthony State Bank, I went from one million to two million, again, we do a lot of CDs there. They've been giving us some good competitive rates on occasion, so I have had up to, uh, three quarters of a million in there, so I wanna make sure I have a little bit more room if I get a good rate from them. So that would be all the increases I'm requesting. Um, like I said, in further, we will probably talk to I paid to see. Right now, I think they're at five point three, but I don't know all the details as far as putting it in and taking it out, I wanna be more informed before we take the jump, but we, it sounds like we can do it at any time. As far as I paid is concerned, we have an act, valid contract, but, uh, like I said, that was from Arlie Brown was the treasurer at the time, so that tells you how old it is. That was before Pam, before, um, Carol, Arlie, so it was eighty-nine, so we gotta get some more information on how to do it. He sent me a lot of information, I just need to get back up to speed, because I don't wanna be not informed and tie our hands on some deposit.
I wanna use our local banks, but I mean, that's an excellent resource to.
It is.
To utilize them, and this.
If we would, if we would have known more at the time, I could have started just putting money over. I wasn't too worried, because like I said, we have six million coming out of Home Trust on Friday, and I can always move from First Citizens to Home Trust to take First Citizens down. So we aren't over our limits, we are for another three days, but. So I have to request that you guys have any questions or if you wanna do it.
Questions here?
This, just, this has to do with it, but it doesn't have to do with it. Rachel, is there a way that we would, you know, we've tried to plug in that twenty-five percent carryover balance with our budgets right in there, something like that? Is there a way that you would be able to figure out, when a fiscal year is done and you do all your accruals to pay for that previous fiscal year, what our actual carryover balance is in the general and in the world? Know that for like the last three years to see what it actually is, other than maybe the twenty-five percent? Are we actually getting thirty, thirty-five percent carryover balances in some of these?
If I don't want me to do that for the last three years?
Yeah.
There were, um, some budget amendments that were done, so the carryover balances weren't being met.
Okay.
Not to hand down in conservation, but prior to him, yeah, we were admitting to like five hundred thousand, so.
So.
What was that general fund line? Because I know in the last six and a half, seven years that I've been treasurer, um, my fund balances for, because every, every time I cash out, which I do it two to three times a week, I write on the top what the county fund balances are, and I have not, besides major, at the end of the year, it's gone up every year.
I just don't, and if we are not maintaining an adequate amount of carryover balance, that's a problem, I get that. But I also don't wanna be building into the system where we're, we're putting in twenty-five, we're figuring twenty-five percent, but actually, we're getting more than that twenty-five percent. I mean, I don't wanna be on that side of it either, so that's, I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, then I can look at it, but I think it all comes back to the department head doing their budget accurately. So, I think for the most part, I'm on this.
Yeah, I work in actual cash, she works in theoretical, so it's two different stories, so.
Do we have a motion for the depository resolution?
So moving.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Roque Hall, Mark.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Sydney.
Hi.
Just had one thing, had a person ask since COVID is closely over, uh, if it's possible to not have appointments anymore for driver's licenses?
Appointments are not required, they're recommended, and I'm not gonna go back. The state of Iowa will not go back, they paid a lot of money for a, um, scheduling programming appointment system. If we don't require appointments or say that we require it, if somebody walks in, well, if they wanna wait, they can wait, it's not a problem. Thing is, if it's not out there, um, the people that have restricted licenses or reinstatements, which are a good hour from Mason City or somewhere else, if they can't get into Mason, they start going around, and then you get them walking in and you spend an hour to an hour and a half dealing with someone that doesn't live in Mitchell County, that didn't wanna make an appointment with Mason City, but saw that we don't require appointments. That's what's happened historically, so our policy is appointments are preferred, but we do do walk-ins anytime, anybody comes in if they wanna wait. But if there's, if somebody has an appointment, the appointment goes first.
Sure. And then we only have one person that does drivers, Rachel?
We only have one person that does drive tests. I do driver's license issuance, and so does Cassie, and, um, Janelle is getting trained on it, but we only have one computer. So you can only do issuance at one time for one person, so. Um, we do ask people, like, um, we had a couple, and we have a lot of foreign nationals, so they're repeat, um, test takers. We have some guys in today that are on their second try for the driver's license, and when they're taking the tests, we usually ask people if it's okay if we issue behind them at the counter. Um, we have had some, some people get very upset when there's people behind them, and we're talking and they're trying to concentrate and they're taking a test, and there's people in promotion behind them, we always tell them to put on the headphones. If they don't want it to read the test to them, they can mute it, and then they just don't hear, you know, our doorbell, um, people talking. But we need to give them their space to test as well, but if they give us permission, we will issue behind them. So, yeah, appointments are preferred, it's not required if they walk in, but also with a real ID. Um, we had a lot of people that were mad because they got sent away two or three times, because they'd show up with all their paperwork, they got it all, and they don't. So it's nice to triage them on the phone before they come in two or three times. Yeah, if they walk in, I, my policy is, I'm sorry, if, if you're, if an older individual that is not aware that we need appointment, that we request appointments, comes in and, you know, it's, you can tell that they went to a new department, they're ready for their picture, we will work them in. We don't try, we don't wanna make it hardship, but we also wanna make it, um, standard for everyone, so.
It's our desk.
Yeah.
So there is only one person that does the driving test?
Right now.
Yes, I heard that complaint, too. Had an appointment, and then the person I'm supposed to do it with, they're, so I had to get rescheduled, but you will have to, so.
We're working on it, yes. There's a lot of trainings involved with that, and, um, if it's a department re-exam, we can only have one person. Uh, the DOT says.
It's a young girl.
Right, so it's probably a driver's ed, that she had to drive her driver's ed, so, yeah. And that happens, and like I said, it's a lot of training with the state. Um, Janelle, we have to get him trained on driver's license first. Um, I've chosen not to do it, just because if people are upset with my employees that are doing the drive test, I ride along, so I don't wanna be the one doing the drive test. And a lot of treasurers don't do the drive tests anymore, at first they did, but, yeah, it's in the works.
Yeah.
Just, it takes probably six to nine months to get them through all their training. Um, they have to take two to three days going to Mason or Inkton for more training, so you gotta be able to schedule that out, too. And the other person who's training is no longer in our office, so that blew some stuff out of the waters.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discuss, discussion of possible act solution on trim roads bridge near Little Cedar.
Okay, so I put that on there because I've had a number of taxpayers get ahold of me, number one, Slav Newton, pays sixty thousand dollars a year in property taxes. He as far as cattle on both sides, he has to go around the mile, costing a lot of time. This bridge has been out for ten plus years, probably, or, I don't know, maybe you have a better idea, Rich? I have a select, built their big hog building up there, it's the shortest route to a highway, you know, they have twenty-some employees go every day, they have maintenance people, feed trucks, you name it. It's, it's an inconvenience for them, too, they pay almost forty thousand dollars a year, so between the, between the two people, they pay a hundred thousand a year, and they feel the two of them. And then plus there's Cole Smith and Lisa Smith, and, I mean, the list goes on, all the people that have contacted me about this bridge. So, I don't know, I've talked with Mark, Mark just worked at county roads, I don't know, can't, then, like, three train car tubes go in, and then it goes down like this, and then when the water gets high, it runs over the road like it used to, like it does now, you know? And if you black top a short strip, so the road don't wash out, I mean, that was Mark's idea, but.
I don't know in Little Cedar River, we can get by with that type of system, I'm not positive, I guess we can look into it and see. If you wanna see the open area, what that bridge provides, you're gonna need seventeen railcar pipe, so you're gonna extend it from seventy-seven feet long to a hundred and seventy feet long to take the same volume of water that bridge is supposed to take.
I mean, it's in, in the same river farther north, there's three of them.
Where, I don't know where there's.
Up on, uh.
On Little Cedar.
Oh, I just, up, uh, there by the state line, that, that road, that was closed for a while, then you put the train car tubes, and you used to have gates on both ends.
It would need to be a bridge, it's pretty, it's comparable to the size that's at your house right there, and bigger, because there's another waterway tributary that feeds into the cedar before it gets to trim roads, so I mean, you're living at a structure that's comparable way, it's what your place is.
But if you, if it had, like, right now, the bridge is up here and it goes down here, if the bridge don't handle it, it runs across the road, like it was already crossing. I mean, on, on heavy rains, normal rain, it wouldn't be a problem, it ain't a problem, but that road has always done that, on heavy rains. So you're, you're not gonna build that whole road up to, to meet that, you know?
I guess it's, I mean, it's gonna have to take, with the height and everything that's there, we could enter into, I can do more research on it.
Do some research on it.
We could be getting into some stream bed credits, if we've gotta start filling in the stream bed with culverts or something like that. Um, you put culverts in, you don't have the, the, uh, on a, on a, on a railcar pipe situation. The, the clearance right now, they usually design a bridge for about two, I think it's two feet of head, of headroom, they call it, uh, I don't know what it's called now, but. They give you two feet of a clear zone or a headroom between the bottom span and the, and the top of the floodwater. And so if you take that calculation, you're looking at, that freeboard test, and you take that calculation in there, you're looking at, that bridge is capable of taking about, I don't know, there's like twelve hundred square meter opening. To throw box culverts and pipe in there, you're looking at taking a seventy-seven span bridge, take the same volume of water and stretch it out to over a hundred feet. Well, if you're gonna use railcar pipe, if you use box culverts, you're still looking at expanding it, but by the time you put six box culverts in, you're spending more money than you would on a bridge, so.
Why would it?
If you look.
Pardon? I, I don't know why it'd take six, upstream, you got three.
Well, upstream is three, I don't understand, upstream is how many miles north that takes less drainage area?
Over five miles, I suppose.
It's taking less drainage, there are other tributaries coming into that, so it takes more volume.
All right, I can look into it, but I, I can get that they pay property taxes. Yeah, they do.
But not all that property taxes go to secondary roads.
Well, I, I realize that, too, but they're, yeah, they're just. A lot of concern.
Take the percentage that's paid to secondary roads in that property tax, it's not a lot.
Yeah, the next time a bridge is bad, by all sage, close that, wrote and fix that one.
On a level, I.
Yeah.
I don't want, it's a level B road, and if it does native level B roads, so when I program things, I'm looking at what's priority is highways with the larger volume of traffic. The county designated level B roads be minimum maintenance and less priority. So I'll look into what it would cost to put something in there, and if it's even feasible.
Yep.
But I just.
Yeah, I mean, things have changed, I always liked to build that bill.
And they built it when it was closed, so they knew it was closed.
But somebody, they were understanding the bridge was gonna get fixed after.
I don't know if we told them that.
I don't know either, that was before my time, but that's what they, I get it, perceived, you know, somehow.
I just know, Mike mentioned it to me, I know down by Staff Quarry, they, they do that, but that, is there a draw thing, or that's a proper term or not?
Yeah, they did that.
Lower than, what, was it a flood in two thousand eight or twelve, and it floated them seventy-twos out of there?
Yep.
We never found one of them, you could drive a dump truck to them.
They'll flow through the road, they silt in, I mean, multiple pipe systems silt in a lot, we try not to put them in, but sometimes it's the most horrible, but I'll, I'll look into options, I just.
I mean, they.
On a level B road with the money that we don't have, it's hard to justify putting a bridge on a level B road that, and I get there's people that wanna use it, I understand that. I think, maybe I kind of explained a little bit earlier about how our grid pattern is, that we don't have the funding to, just, to take care of what, what's more urgent right now. But if the board would like me to look into it, I will look into it.
Well, I would like you to look into it.
I don't want you to be getting into an in-depth thing, I mean, I, you know, start the process, but, uh, right offhand, it does, it seems not feasible for me to be doing it. That's not a known, but, um, that, that road is not, that's not a, that's a windy road that's small, and I can't imagine a lot of trucks being, using it. Um. No, we talked about Staff Quarry, the thing is, with the, the pipes that there, that is designed for a low-water crossing, and when, when it gets high, it runs across. But the landowner that's receiving that water has basically had his property, I'll say, destroyed, and it's a constant rock problem. So he's suffered the consequences of what we've put in there. Uh, if we're gonna advocate doing the same thing for the trim roads, you're gonna.
Cole Smith is one of the landlords on one side, and he wants, he's one of them, he wants something to.
I'm not opposed to looking into it, but it's, it doesn't seem feasible right now for me, but never know till you investigate.
Yeah, I don't get it, I just, them tubes are that expensive, are they?
I think you're limited to railcar pipe, I mean, railcar pipe is limited in diameter, it's probably ten feet, but there are structural, corrugated pipe arches and things like that that get really spindy, but.
Yeah.
Uh, railcar pipes probably pushing fifteen thousand dollars each. Well, fifteen thousand dollars, then you're gonna have.
That's just material.
You're gonna have to have drop walls on both sides, which you're gonna have to have steel head walls on, and you're gonna have to put them in place.
That's not installation.
And three, three, a triple line of railcar pipe wouldn't even work for the flow that's replacing the bridge right now.
Um, very much flow there now, there, there never is.
You don't design for the current flow, though, you know, there, the under-year flood events and things like that, and usually you don't take a, on a typical road, you don't wanna undersize the, the opening that's there and put something smaller in, um, so that's where the calculation comes in, the square foot of opening of existing, and how many railcar pipe it would take to quantify that same amount, but. That would be, I'm sorry, that would be ridiculous. sorry, that would be ridiculous to put seventeen railcar pipe in for a crossing.
Well, I don't think it should take seventeen. Like I said, there's three, five miles north.
So that's, that's a completely different.
Well, I know, but I don't think it goes from three to seventeen in five miles.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I don't agree with that, but anyway, we can look into it and see what it would take.
He does the math and that's why he's an engineer that we hired.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Seventeen is an exaggerated number, you know what I'm saying?
Pardon?
I just think seventeen is an exaggerated number for it.
Uh, okay. I'm sure you did the math, didn't you? I didn't come up with the number, I'll do, I, that's what I, I mean, I know you, yes. I didn't invent a number.
Like, so you've already looked into it?
Pardon?
You already looked into it, that you know it's seventeen or what?
I did a calculation, the square opening, the existing bridge opening and what a ten foot diameter culvert square opening is and. On the agenda, you said? I can, I can double check my math.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sure it's not going to be true to take the, the, the flooding flows, but.
I'll look into it. Yeah, look into it, that's all taxpayers want, just look into it.
Meetings attended.
I had a city council meeting last night and the general business, they updated their, they set a public hearing date for their, for amending their urban renewal plan. They do that every year. I guess that's pretty much it for that. So it's all in.
We had the substance abuse collision board meeting and so we discussed the tip training and all that kind of stuff. And the compliance checks, if that, to happen and so.
Pretty much talked about it. Sidney, you have any?
Oh, forgot.
Sorry. Yeah, thanks for skipping me. I have meetings tonight and Thursday, so I'll have more for you next week. Thank you.
As Michelle Rock was in the meeting, they've got some funds that they can use on something and they want to get Rock Falls and Plymouth, the towns more involved because it runs through their communities and they're not, nobody's ever come to that one, never, they, they don't show up in a meeting. Trying to get them more involved, otherwise I'll find a, go somewhere else for the project. That's it.
I was in the office last Thursday and there was an HVAC meeting in here, so I just sat in on it. And I had a fair board meeting last night, just went through our checklist, getting ready to do some groundwork with the weather, what it is, have them sign the grant agreement. There'll be a handful of them going to a district meeting, eight, fourteen. They, they are looking for a, I don't remember if it's the queen contest coordinator or the little miss and mister contest, looking for coordinators for that. So if anybody would want to coordinate that, you can check with me after the meeting. So, and then I had one other thing, this item's a note I should have talked about maybe in the claims, but I don't know if Laura and Jessa or if it was, anyway, there was an eighteen hundred dollar bill for funeral services and I believe we all, they only asked for thirty-six hundred, I think it's a couple funerals. And I was wondering if, if that eighteen or is there any left in that fund for these last two months? I don't remember, is that?
I don't think that's referred to us.
Okay, maybe it was Ashley or.
Oh, I wonder if it's social services.
Yeah, so I just wondering if, if that was the first one for the year or, I could ask them.
I think there was another one, I heard this one too, it seemed like we had another one of those just recently, I thought.
Yeah, I think there was two.
Yeah, so that, and I, seems to me it was thirty-six hundred dollars is what they asked for, but I don't know, could we go back and look at that, Rachel?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I mean, in our, on our budget from last year, or I guess I could go, I could look at it because I have it all, so. Anyway, I just, we got two months left, so I wanted to make sure that if something came up, that I would.
I think it's into the set amount the funeral home will accept, I believe.
Yeah.
So they're all the same.
Yeah. So, anyway, that was just an item, no, I didn't notice, so.
What I remember.
And that's it.
Manner management plan update.
And one for Robert Neese, thirty-nine point three, Well Avenue, Osage.
Public comment, are you public? Okay, we'll turn the meeting at ten twenty-six.